Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two amendments to today's agenda. After meeting earlier in our study session, I'd like to add two items to our consent agenda. First was the first item from the study session, which was approval of the approval to renew the lobbyist contract with governmental consulting services incorporated. That will go onto the agenda as item I. And number four from the study session, which was the Northland bus stop relocation, concrete improvements, will go into consent agenda item as item J. Both of those items were discussed just previously in our study session that started earlier at six o'clock today. All right. Moving forward, we have a few presentations that we'd like to do today. First is the Southfield Spirit Fest and Summer Solstice Run presentation. And who do we have presenting for us today? It's Lenita Denson coming forward, Dr. Denson, and Mr. Mannion, how are you?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. For the viewing audience, my name is Michael Mannion, Community Relations Director for the city. This evening, we'd like to present a brief overview of the Southfield Spirit Fest and Summer Solstice Run that will be taking place this Saturday, June 17th, beginning at 5:00 PM with a parade down Civic Center Drive and then culminating on the front lawn in the Spirit Fest and Solstice Run. I have with us this evening Lori Christensen and Dr. Lina Denson, who are Southfield ambassadors. Dr. Denson is also a planning commissioner, and as well as Mr. Greg Leschman, who's the race director for the Summer Solstice Run. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Christensen.
Hello.
Hello.
As Michael said, I'm Lori Christensen, one of the Southfield ambassadors. And to kick off this great summer that we're having, the Southfield is hosting a huge celebration on Saturday, June 17th, 2017, with a lot of spirit and a lot of soul. The Southfield Spirit Fest will start with a lively parade that will be along the Civic Center Drive at 5:00 PM, and it will begin at the Don Rittler Field House on the campus of Lawrence Technological University, and it will end at the Civic, excuse me, the Central Park Boulevard. Afterwards, on Evergreen Front Lawn of the municipal building, we will segue into a fest that'll be filled with music, fun, games, which will also include the Summer Solstice Kids Fun Run at 6:30 PM that will start, and also the 5K Run and Walk that will start at 7:00 PM. This is truly an event that is sure to bring the community together and will be a summer celebration that you won't forget. We look forward to seeing you there.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Christensen, if you wanted to give us a few words on the Summer Solstice Run.
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. My name is Greg Leschman, the race director for the Southfield Summer Solstice Run. This is the fourth year that we're bringing it to the city. This is the second year in a row that we'll be having the start-finish line on the brand-new Evergreen Road Boulevard, as I like to refer. We're approaching 200 runners right now. On average, we get between 300 and 400, with most of the participants, about a third of the participants, signing up within those last few days. So, so far, the weather looks great, in the low eighties and sunny, so we're very happy about that forecast right now. We've had fantastic cooperation with all the departments, and I want to go on record by thanking all of everybody, from Michael to Terry, everybody, and the Terries. Everyone's been very, very cooperative, police department, fire department, you name it. Everyone's really come together in the true spirit of Southfield, and we are really looking forward to a fantastic day and evening event. As Lori mentioned, the day kicks off with a 5:00 PM parade and kind of moves on to the 6:30 Kids Fun Run. That goes around the main front lawn. It's a one-third mile for the kids. And then at 7:00 PM, the 5K Run and Walk kicks off. And again, we have all the cooperation of all the public works and police and fire for shutting down the roads, making sure everything is nice and safe. And then from 5:00 to 11:00 PM, we're going to have a fun festival, as Lori mentioned, on the front lawn with bounce houses, with food trucks, with kids' activities, music stage, and beer tent, and soft drinks, and food trucks, and a lot of fun. So hopefully, everybody can attend, and we look forward to seeing you then. Thank you.
And I would just like to add, if I may, for further information, we'd just recommend everyone go to cityofsouthfield.com for the latest information on the Spirit Fest and Solstice Run, as well as the city's social media channels on Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, as well as Cable 15, and in the current issue of Southfield Living City Newsletter, you've got all the latest information. But the website's your best bet that is updated most frequently, and that's a great spot to get all of the activities that will be taking place that day, as well as road closures that will be possibly impacting some folks in the area. Any further questions for us?
Any questions, Council? Comments?
I wish you a lot of luck and a lot of support.
Thank you.
It's going to be a beautiful day, day two.
We're hoping so. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Comment. So, if we're in the parade, we're not able to run or walk?
You could do both.
Able?
Absolutely. Yeah, because the parade will conclude approximately 6:00 PM, and then the start for the 5K Run is 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Of course, in the middle of that, we've got the Children's Fun Run, that's at 6:30. So certainly, we welcome everyone to participate in both. We'd love to see everyone come out for the parade, as well as participate in the 5K Run that'll take place at 7:00. So you should have a nice window to change that type of thing, get prepared for the race proper.
Okay. I do believe I won the raffle at the Mayor's State of the City, so who do I need to reach out to you, Greg? Okay.
That's the guy to talk to.
Mr. Brightwell?
Greg, I want to thank you for your involvement with this, and also ambassadors. I recall your presentations, and I'm just glad to see that we have two lovely ambassadors here to support this process. And I think it's going to be, like Mr. Focas says, it's going to be a lovely day, and I can feel the enthusiasm in the air. And thank you very much for supporting Southfield this way.
Thank you, Councilman Brightwell. And I would too, would just like to add, the ambassadors have been tremendous. We're very fortunate to have this group of volunteers in our city that have been working diligently on putting the parade and a lot of the festival portion together, as well as Mr. Leschman, of course, the race director for the Summer Solstice Run. Dr. Denson did mention to add, we do have 27 entries in our parade thus far, and there's a lot of unique entries from Maury, the mascot for the Lions, to, you know, a number of classic cars and dignitaries. So it's going to be a really neat parade, and just would encourage everyone to come out and participate in viewing it, and then enjoy the festivities following.
All right. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Before we go to the next item, I did, I forgot to mention, later in the agenda today, we are, you know, we do have a special assessment of town, not a town hall, a public hearing on the special assessment for the city center advisory board. And we did want to let, if there was anyone here that maybe wanted to speak with the assessor prior to the public hearing, he is here in the audience, maybe wave your hand in the back there, so you can have an opportunity to speak with him, if you'd like, prior to the public hearing later in the meeting. Next, we have a presentation on the MDEC Patroncy Grant Challenge for the Red Pole Park. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Crowe?
Good evening, once again. We are on a mission with public art for our city, and I'm pleased to tell you about a project this evening. I'll wait till the screen comes down. We do have a video, a short, very short video, that'll kind of speak for itself. But I am here this evening to talk about the Red Pole Park that we're proposing for Northwestern Highway, the Service Drive just above Civic Center Drive.
Red?
Yeah, go ahead. We'll, that's all right.
Pole Park is a large-scale sculpture installation along a brand-new biking and walking trail that we installed last December. We want people biking, walking, using mobility aids to get out of their cars and into their community. Red Pole Park is going to feature several dozen bright red, tall monumental poles on a grid on both sides of the path. So you're coming down this path, and it's swooping a little, and you're passing between this sort of surreal geometric forest of these red poles.
There's been a lot of new bike paths that have really improved the safety in the city center area. It's great. And my family notices when we, when we go to bike in other cities that don't have the new, complete, integrated bike paths that we've recently had installed in Southfield, it's not as nice, it's not as safe, it's not as easy to ride.
I think it's going to lead to a healthier lifestyle for our residents, it's going to bring people together in the community, it makes the neighborhoods more livable.
We are working very diligently on creating a city center in a new kind of downtown, more walkable, and a place that people want to congregate. We're trying to create a sense of place that, that you know you're in a destination.
You might get out and walk once or twice if there's just a path, but if there's art, if there's something to see, if there is, let's face it, an amazing spot for a selfie, you're going to get out there way more often and walk more, which is exactly what we want you doing, enjoying the community, getting heart-healthy exercise, experiencing the walkable aspects of Southfield. If we're able to raise $50,000 through this campaign, MEDC will then match that, so that we'll have a total of $100,000 to build the park. But we have to raise $50,000 in order to get that match. That's an amount of money that will enable us to do real quality installation, durable materials, and to put enough poles there to make it really a visually interesting space. Every $5 you donate could be $10. Every $100 is $200. We really appreciate all of it. Sharing the campaign also helps very much. Get the word out, ship in, make this be your park.
All right. So as you can see, this is another one of our efforts to bring public art to our city, particularly in the city center. Just to give you a little additional background, last year, last couple of years, the city center advisory board has been setting aside funds to complete the walkway from, from here, down Civic Center Drive, up Northwestern Highway Service Drive, which there was no sidewalk there, it was really a goat path, as our planner likes to call them. And then from there, you go up LaShaw Road to 11 Mile, and you can come back down Evergreen. So we have a complete walking path now from, from here for someone to make a large loop. And on the Northwestern Service Drive, the pathway was paid for by the city center advisory board. They set aside money for three years in a row to afford the path, and now we're doing some dressing up of that path. One of the things that is visible in the video is the, the grant that the city received from DTE for $13,000 in tree plantings. Those are in. We envision, as you walk along that, that new pathway, that you'll have a series of experiences. The first one being, there's a wetland with some very tall grasses. Then you would move to the Red Pole Park. And then our, our next experience is, that we're planning, is to install three of the Northland Pegasus along the path, so that it's just an interesting walkway that visually, or whether you're walking or riding, that you go through. So we're very grateful. I'll remind everyone that we do a lot of interaction with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and that we were the ninth city, last December, you'll recall, we were the ninth city to receive the redevelopment ready certification, the ninth city in Michigan out of, you know, hundreds of cities. So this is a grant that they're, they're funding, and for every dollar we raise, it gets matched by a dollar. But we must meet that threshold of $50,000. We are on our way. We've had a number of contributions already, and I'll just underscore that you can donate online, and it's www.patronicity, that's P-A-T-R-O-N-I-C-I-T-Y, patronicity.com/redpolepark. And that's all one word. These donations are tax deductible. The city will acknowledge donor donations that you can use on your income tax filing for 2017. Or you can send a check to either the city planner's office or to my office, made out, payable to the city of Southfield. On the memo line, please state Red Pole Park. Okay? So we, very excited about this. Our campaign started on June 6th. We have to raise the $50,000 by August 4th. So we're, we're on the, the campaign to, to make that a reality.
Yeah, I'm excited about it too, and as the mayor indicated, we've been working diligently on making the city center district in particular, and the city of Southfield, more walkable and pedestrian-friendly. And this art installation is one of a series of outdoor rooms that is to be experienced by pedestrians and bicyclists. However, the scale of the Red Pole Park will be very visible from the lodge in Northwestern Highway, and this will be another way of putting us on the map for all those motorists that travel by.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Morris?
I really like this. I think this is a great addition for the bike path, as well as that area. But I just had a question. Is there going to be any signage? You know how sometime kids, when they see the red poles, they might try to navigate in between them? Is there any going to be, be any signage that tells them that that space is prohibited? They have to keep the bike on the bike path?
I don't think we've gotten that far yet, but that's something we'll take under consideration. The bike path is designed to national standards, about width in clearance zone. These poles will be basically on a 10-by-10 grid outside of the pathway.
I'm just thinking from liability.
I understand. Yeah, that's a good point, but we haven't gotten down to that detail yet.
I would also note that we are planning for donors of 1,000 or more. There will be a little plaque on the pole to acknowledge their gift.
Excellent. Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next presentation is a joint resolution on the commitment to support the principles of the Paris Climate Agreement 2016. And I'll come down and join the mayor to represent our community.
Well, Council President Protem Cruz, and also Chair of the Council Legislative Committee is coming to the podium. I do want to acknowledge that we had a number of people contact the city and urging us to stay on the course of green infrastructure, green technologies, conservation, and so I am certainly supportive of that, and I referred this to the council legislative committee. And so therefore, the resolution is before you this evening for adoption. So, Mr. Cruz, would you like to do the honors?
So again, this is a joint resolution expressing the commitment of the mayor of Southfield and the Southfield City Council to continue to support the principles represented in the Paris Climate Agreement 2016, and it states, "Whereas, in 2016 was the hottest year in the modern temperature record, and rising temperature due to a changing climate will irreversibly damage the global economy. And whereas, if left unaddressed, the consequences of a rising global temperature will have the potential to adversely impact all Americans, hitting vulnerable populations hardest, hurting working families, and harming productivity in the middle-class job sectors such as construction, agriculture, and tourism, among others. And whereas, there has been an increase in extreme weather events across the United States which have affected supply chains, consumer behaviors, and local economies. And whereas, the Paris Agreement provides a pathway forward to limit temperature rise to well below 2 degrees Celsius, and sends a powerful signal to the world that climate change is an immediate problem facing the planet in the 21st century. And whereas, if the United States withdraws from the Paris Agreement, the United States will face an international diplomatic backlash and succeed leadership on climate change and renewable energy issues to China. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of Southfield and the city, and the Southfield City Council commits to continue to support the principles represented in the Paris Climate Agreement of 2016. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council will take meaningful action to demonstrate that the city of Southfield is committed to upholding the historic principles represented in the Paris Climate Accord, and that can be enacted to fight the climate crisis." And so again, as the mayor said, we're bringing this to the council for adoption. It was supported by the three members of the legislative committee, myself, Mr. Brightwell, and Ms. Morris. And we want to be on record for this, to make our statement as it relates to this issue. We're not the only city and/or state that has chosen to take this route. A number of cities and states across the country have done so too. So even if our president doesn't feel the same way that we do, we can still continue doing, and we've already been committed to this type of work, but it's another declaration of reaffirming of where the city stands as it relates to climate change and control.
And later this evening, on the council agenda, are a number of ordinance changes regarding sustainability and green infrastructure, specifically to cisterns, rain barrels, pervious pavement, bio swales, and stormwater retention.
Thank you for that conclusive presentation. Unless there were any questions from the council? The motion? Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
Pardon?
Right, so it's been moved by Mr. Manobom, supported by Ms. Seymour, that we adopt this resolution to reaffirm our commitment to the Paris Climate Accord of 2016. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And we have one abstention. Ms. Menel, clerk. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. All right, our final presentation for the evening is a presentation from the Southfield Jayhawks. Do we have a representative here from Southfield? I believe Christopher Frost, is that correct? All right, please, come on up to the podium, or the lectern, I should say. If you wouldn't mind, please giving us you guys your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Christopher Frost.
I'm Damian Pitt.
Good evening. We're humbled and honored to stand before you all today. Thank you for wanting to learn a little bit more about our organization. The Southfield Jayhawks, we have been in the south, the city of Southfield for over 67 years. We are a youth athletics program, but we're trying to rebrand, and we're trying to be a more holistic, and offer more educational resources, and more things that, or more items that can help our youth to be better citizens as well. So right now, we're, we come before you today to ask for some resources to help us aid our mission as far as providing our, our young athletes more academic, academic resources such as study hall and academic enrichment. We're looking for some space to be able to hold the study hall for an hour or two hours a day, to give more resources to our children. We're also looking for more financial resources, maybe grants that might be available to us since we are in the city of Southfield. And we're also just looking to increase their awareness to what we're doing as an organization, so we can bring in more youth. The more, we feel as though, the more youth that we could bring into our organization, the more that we're able to impact their lives to be better citizens. We also want the city council, we want our parents and our volunteers to also have a rapport with the city council as well, so they'll know how to, to, trying to think of the word, I'm sorry, to be able to reach and contact you all if they have any, you know, issues and things of that nature. But we also want to have that report, so we could increase our awareness and our brand as well. And that's basically it.
Did you have anything you want to add to that?
I believe to add on, ultimately, what we're looking to do, as you stated, Southfield has been, Southfield Jayhawks have been around, and ultimately, we're looking to rebrand. It's one thing to have an endeavor where kids are focused around athletics and football, but ultimately, we want to produce something that's a little bit holistic, as you stated, in which our kids are not just involved in the academia of things, but they're involved in the whole evolution of what's going on in the city of Southfield, from volunteering and things of that nature. And we're a little green behind some of the things that are going on, so we want to make sure that we're activated in what you all are doing and what you all are about. But ultimately, we just don't want to be about the youth themselves, but we want to be about the youth and the families that are part of our organization overall. So ultimately, we're just seeking here to formulate a bridge between you all, to let you know that we're here in the city of Southfield, and that if you can provide us young men with any type of resources that you have available, or contacts that you have available that man, we would greatly be appreciative of that, because ultimately, it's not about us, it's about our youth and the families who patronize what we're doing with the Southfield Jayhawks ultimately. So again, thank you for your time.
All right, Mr. Manobom?
Have, have you had any conversations with our Parks and Rec Department?
Oh, sir.
That may be a great starting resource.
Appreciate that.
I believe our Parks and Rec Director is in the audience. So, you know, feel free, you know.
Absolutely.
To reach out there. I think it is a great opportunity to, to partner with, with you to expand.
Yes.
Whatever opportunities we can in Southfield, obviously, we'll, we can have additional conversations, but I definitely think our Parks and Rec Department is a great starting point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. That's simply what we're seeking for. Like I said, we just don't want to be monolithic, monolithic in our cause around athletics, but we want to be holistic in our approach, as we're dealing with youth and families. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
I think I heard you say, community service?
Absolutely.
My ears picked up. I am always looking for volunteers, and I think it's so important for young people to learn that they're part of a community, and the whole idea of giving back to their community. There are a number of community service opportunities, so if you make sure I get your contact information, I'll be happy to share those with you.
Yes, sir. If I may ask, how do we ensure that you have our contact?
I'll leave a card. Mr. Brightwell?
Yep, you might have mentioned it. What is the, the size of your organization?
I couldn't hear you say it one more time.
What is the size of the Jayhawk Youth Organization?
We're averaging 100 to 200 youth, and then there's probably another 100, 200 parents, so 400, 500 volunteers and parents and children.
Is that active membership?
Yes.
Okay.
And they come from, they're not, these students are not just in Southfield Public Schools, correct?
It's the surrounding areas, but majority of it is Southfield.
Okay. But I mean, are they in the Southfield School District?
Yes, in Southfield School District.
I would say at least 94%.
All right, I know that Coach Conley at, of course, that's varsity football, but at Southfield High School, the same concept of, had to go to Study Table, it's about scholar athletes. And by the way, you probably know Lawrence Tech is starting a football team. And they're, they also do the whole thing with scholar athletes. It's not just the jock throwing out the ball.
Exactly.
And that's the thing, I mean, because it's one thing to say Study Table, but as we know, that's kind of a least invasive approach. Ultimately, we want to make sure we have some sustain for 12 months out of the year. So again, that's why we bring ourselves to you all, to, to help and assist us with what that looks like overall. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Focasi?
Christopher, nice meeting you both this evening. I go way back with the Jayhawks, when these kids used to come out of each neighborhood and used to play each other. At one time, even played at Bernie, there used to be a football field down in a little valley, going out to Evergreen Road, and that's where, I know Ken probably remembers that, and that's where we used to have football games, even at Bernie. And Ted Simms used to play on that. He ended up being a star at Southfield High, and going on to St. Louis Cardinals, and made his name for himself. But anyways, anything I can do for you, count me in, because I really believe in what you're doing, and everybody has been participating all these years, and have kept it alive, and I really appreciate that.
We appreciate that. Is there any way we could get your contact information as well? Is there any way that we could get your contact information as well?
No. No.
You can get all our information off the website. I mean, at least a, a general contact number and each of our individual email addresses is on the website.
Do want to add this because you said, you said something that's pivotal. We do practice at Bernie and.
Brace Elementary.
Excuse me.
Brace Elementary.
I mean Brace, I'm sorry. And then several, couple times we bought our own lawnmowers to cut like certain sections of the grass. So we do need some assistance with the cutting of grass. Grass gets rather tall, and like I said, in the past, we bought our own lawnmowers to make sure that was cut. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
I just have one more comment in, in regards to your desire to have more comprehensive support services. Are you aware of my brother's keeper?
Yes, we are.
That initiative, are you involved with that?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I am aware.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would encourage you to get involved with them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Banks?
Yes, good evening. We're always looking for young adults to assist in the election process, so if they're willing to work a full day and are computer literate, the young adults are a definite asset, and we'd be more than happy to work with the organization.
Yeah, we would love to have our youth get involved with that, definitely.
Great, well, my son's a former Jayhawk, so you definitely got my support as well. I did one other question, is, is the Jayhawk, are the Jayhawks the only football team that represents the city of Southfield?
Uh, no, you have the Southfield Ravens as well, and I think, I think that's it.
I think it's just, it's just those two there. Okay. All right, just out of curiosity. No, still didn't take anything away from you guys, just was out of curiosity. All right. Great. If there's nothing else, thanks for coming, guys, and let's be in touch.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good evening.
If you can get ahold of the Clerk's office, you can find me anywhere.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, great. All right, moving on, don't have any appointments for today. We have three sets of minutes from the eighth, ninth, and sixteenth of May.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll move the minutes of the whole, committee, the whole meeting of May eighth, the committee, the whole meeting on May ninth, and the committee, the whole meeting on May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Support? All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Ficassi and seconded by Mr. Mandelbaum that we accept the committee of the whole meeting minutes from May eighth, ninth, and sixteenth. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. Moving on to our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ficassi?
Yeah, I'd like to, what is the transit, transit relocation, is that what, is that, what is that going to be?
Item J.
J. I'd like that removed from the, make comment on it.
Sure. All right, so Agenda Item A is the authorization to contract for bus transportation services for the Parks and Rec Department. Our purchasing department has advertised a request for bids for bus services for the Parks and Rec Day Camp Field Trips to cover the period of June through August, two thousand seventeen. The selective vendor is required to provide round trip transportation for five day, five day camps for approximately seventy one day trips total. The estimated cost will be thirteen thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars. Agenda Item B, receipt of bids on major street pavement marking services for the Transportation Department. The contract will cover one application of sprayable thermoplastic material annually. Pavement markings will be reapplied each spring to correct the damage sustained during the winter de-icing operations and normal wear and tear. Vendor PK contracting will receive the, was the approved bid at eighty-one thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. Agenda Item C, receipt of proposals for the two thousand seventeen roadway joint and crack sealing program. The city recently received proposals for roadway joint and crack sealing and overbanding to be performed on major and local roads throughout the city. The joint and crack sealing portion of this program involves removal of existing joint sealing material on concrete roads, cleaning the joints and cracks, and filling them with new sealant. The fiscal impact of this project is two hundred eighty-six thousand five hundred fifty Agenda Item D is email inspection services. As you can imagine, the city of Southfield receives thousands of emails daily. Unfortunately, many of those emails are unwelcoming and thus require the city to purchase an email inspection and filtering software solution. The Technology Services Director is recommending Proofpoint Enterprise. This, this particular program gives us better integration with Office three sixty-five and is the best of breed email filtering with granular control, sandboxing, and better end user management. The fiscal impact of this software is seventeen thousand six hundred dollars. Agenda Item E, receipt of bids on the Section Seventeen Northwestern Highway Services Drive Improvements. Section Seventeen Northwestern Highway Service Drive Improvement Project, where we just received the bids for those. The proposed project will take place on the northbound Northwestern Highway Service Drive between Telegraph and Northwestern Highway. This road is to be reconstructed in asphalt, the new concrete curves, and improved shoulders, changing it from a three lane cross section to a two lane cross section with passing lanes utilized at the, at the Case and Lockdale Intersections. Fiscal impact is three million three hundred and four dollars, seven hundred sixty-seven cents, seven hundred sixty-seven dollars. Agenda Item F, approval of the Cost Participation Agreement for the reconstruction of northbound Northwestern Highway Service Drive. So the Oakland County Board of Commissioners has presented a Cost Participation Agreement for that reconstruction of north, northbound Northwestern Highway Service Drive from Telegraph to Northwestern. The proposed project will again involves the reconstruction of point nine-nine miles of existing asphalt and concrete pavement. Again, the estimated cost of the project, as I said, was three million three hundred four dollars, and the Local Road Improvement Program matching fund for this is a hundred nine thousand eight, a hundred and nine, eight hundred thirteen dollars. Agenda Item G is the proposal for environmental consulting services. On June twenty-eighth, AKT Peerless confirmed a minor environmental release at the former Northland Powerhouse associated with the removal of a four thousand gallon underground storage tank. The tank was located near the former maintenance building on J.L. Hudson and Greenfield Road. Removal activities included the disposition of the UST pipe fittings and dispensers. A closure report was prepared in connection with the release and submitted to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. Based on the audit of the closure report, additional delineation and characterization of the release is required to satisfy the MEDQ. So this additional work is going to come at the cost of thirty-nine thousand dollars. Agenda Item H, proposal for environmental activities under the former Firestone property. With the expected demolition of Firestone, of the Firestone Building scheduled for late summer, two thousand seventeen, it's necessary to conduct a soil and groundwater delineation investigation to determine the extent and associated remedies with the contamination. This investigation will help determine the extent of the demolition. The fiscal impact of this project is going to be sixteen thousand dollars. Agenda Item I, approval of renewal lobbyist contract with GCSI. The city of Southfield has retained GCSI at Lansing, Michigan to provide lobbying services since two thousand and seven. On August twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen, this body approved a three-year contract with GCSI which expires this month. The Legislative Committee has discussed the matter and has suggested that the contract be renewed for an additional three years. There'll be no changes in the cost of the contract from the previous one, and it will remain at the amount of forty-four thousand three hundred and four dollars.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Brightwell?
I make a motion that we approve Consent Items A through I.
Support?
It's been properly moved by Mr. Brightwell and seconded by Mr. Mandelbaum that we approve Consent Agenda Items A through I. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Agenda Item J, which is Northland Bus Stop Relocation Concrete Improvements. Mr. Ficassi?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I just would like to make a comment. I spoke to it at the committee, the whole earlier, but it's really concerning to me that we are the number one business address in the state of Michigan. We have employees that come throughout this city for various reasons, whether it be commercial or office. And SEMCOG makes the center of all Southeast Michigan population at Telegraph Road and I-696. Removing the station at Northland creates a real problem as far as I can see in that there's no dispersment of employees to these buildings from a certain spot. In other words, it's almost like airplanes going without a, a airport. All these buses that say Northland, they know automatically that they're going to go to a bus stop and get on another connection to go where they live or go to where they work. Without that station, they're not going to get any service whatsoever. The only people who are going to get service is from Southfield Road to Greenfield Road, from Nine Mile Road to Eight Mile Road. And that's where they're replacing the station with buses that will traverse through that area only. Then some way, Smart is going to have to connect with these buses somehow, somewhere in that vicinity to disperse employees through the rest of the city. I find it very hard that this could be a workable thing because there's no place to go primarily to get a bus, and there's not one to go from the station to wherever you work. I know that it costs money to put a station in, but I was just, we were with SEMCOG, we were in Port Huron this last year or two, and they have a brand new transportation facility. And if Port Huron can get this station built in Port Huron to disperse their people, and they are no way close to the twenty-seven million square feet of office we have or the large commercial base that we have, then something is wrong. And I think that DDOT, the state, somebody has to come in and play a role in replacing that depot somewhere in the south end of the city. I mean, I just do not see how any, anybody can be dispersed throughout this, even town center, even if you have an employee come in to work here at city of Southfield, if they live in Detroit, they couldn't get here. And I don't know, they, they don't have a Northland station to go to to catch a Smart bus, so somehow they're going to find their way either by a bicycle or walking, and that's not going to happen. And I think competition today with, with our large office space and what's happening with the activity in the inner city of Detroit, you know, we are in competition. You see Microsoft go, you see other companies go or into Detroit because, you know, they got the Q line, they got a bus station, they got, they got also a bus route, and they used to take Detroiters to Northland and be dispersed in the Southfield. All these restaurants you see up and down Evergreen Road, you know, they got a lot of people there that, that live in Detroit and can't, won't be able to get to work. Just, just to take one, one route, you know, down Evergreen Road is not going to exist. And so I'd like to really get our lobbyists to see whether or not we can work something with, with MDOT, DDOT, Smart, or somebody to, to come up with some answer to keep our employees that are, or people who are employed here into where they're supposed to be. And right now, I, I look at this plan and this is not going to happen, and we're going to get inundated with calls from the business community, the commercial people who are waiting for their employees to show up, and they're not going to be able to get to their places. And that's a real concern of mine.
Mr. Zorn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the Detroit Department of Transportation and Smart have had a number of public meetings discussing this, this matter. They have interviewed people and the riders at different locations. There's been a substantial major planning effort for the last nine months regarding this. I'm not discounting any of the statements that Councilman Ficassi has made, but we believe DDOT will have a better presence in Southfield than they have historically had. We need to continue to keep DDOT and Smart working as well as even MDOT. The issues that still need to be resolved, this is to install the, the bus pads to relocate them in multiple locations throughout the DDA. Right now, someone going to Northland who wants to get to OCC has almost a half mile walk. Someone who wants to get to Providence Hospital is landing a half mile south of their destination. This will put them closer. We've got a lot of work to continue to improve this. As I stated during our study session, since two thousand and ten, the city has added transit and non-motorized pass system. This is consistent with that, that master plan. So the issues that will still need to be resolved will be a location for Smart, and I agree, MDOT for park and ride will have to be at, at the table, and the park and ride is one piece that we still have yet to resolve on this project. We also do have the MDOT parking ride at the Greyhound Center at Loser and Eleven Mile. So we need to continue to work on this, but this plan was what DDOT and Smart brought to us as to what they felt the proposed locations would be. We are asking for a expenditure just a little over ninety thousand, with some of the entities have already agreed to reimburse the city for the cost of those pads.
Any other?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To the administrator, I hear what you're saying, but I, I, I don't know, it's how, it's just taken too light, this problem. I mean, when, when you're talking about transportation and the things that DDOT is doing, what they're doing is just taking care of the Northland area is all they're doing, the DDA area. We've got an entire other part of the city to take care of, and that's what I'm concerned about. I mean, you've got, what is it, a square mile? It's a big deal, they're going to put buses to route around square mile, and we've got, what, twenty-seven square miles of the city?
And Detroit system's focused primarily on Detroit, and it's Smart that's, the objective is to get throughout the rest of the, the network. I agree, there's continued room for, for improvement. When you sit down with people from DDOT and Smart, they can tell you where, which routes you connect to and such. This is actually a greater presence on DDOT's part than they've historically had in Southfield, and you're correct, we need to have Smart, and, and Smart has been a part of these public hearings as well as part of the interviews.
Fred, let me, let me just give you an example. Twelve Mile and Telegraph, which is high intense commercial area, there's a, a station outside of the Myers there on Twelve Mile Road. You get on that bus there, what is that sign going to say where you're going? Now it says Northland. They are refusing to put Northland on that any longer. So where are they going? You, you see that sign, it's not Northland, where it's somewhere on Nine Mile Road or somewhere on Eight Mile Road. Call your mother and they'll pick you up. It's Southfield and Eight Mile Road or something, I mean, it's just.
Or Northland Drive.
Pardon?
I mean, you're alternate, you'll have Nine Mile, three, three stops on Nine Mile, two on Rutland, two on Northland Drive.
Are they going to state that on their buses? See, that's the thing. Nothing has really worked out yet, but we're going to have a situation where that, the station's going to drop, and the bus system is going to get started. People are going to have to get accustomed to this new route. In the meantime, we're going to get inundated with people who are out there at these bus stations lost, because they won't know where they're going. And that is going to be something that we don't want, I don't want to live through. That's going to be a bad situation, and I don't, I don't take it lightly because, you know, like I said, I had a restaurant at Ten Mile and Northwestern, we used to have a jitney, McVie's, myself, and Golden Mushroom, we used to have to pick up a Northland and get our people to work. And, and today, you know, if you don't have a means to get people to work, and it's all times of the day, you know, if they're starting in the morning, they got to get there at five, six, seven o'clock, then they got to leave, sometimes stay there to eight o'clock at night, how are they going to get these transfers in to, to get home? You know, we don't even have taxi service, you know, you get Uber? I don't know, but it's sure going to be a, a serious situation when people start. But it's sure going to be a, a serious situation when people start standing at these bus stops and asking the bus driver, you know, where do you go so I can get into DDOT? And that's what's going to happen. And I say, well, I don't go down that street, or I don't go that place. It's going to be a big mess.
It's definitely going to be a transition for everybody, but I think just for the purpose of this discussion, not, not negating anything you're saying, that's, that's further down the line, I think, for this issue, we just want to at least take the vote on this particular proposal. So unless anybody else had any comments or questions on item J, again, this is the Northland Bus Ra, Bus Stop Relocation Improvements. I didn't get a chance to read the background for the people watching, but it's the proposed redevelopment just requires a relocation of the DDOT and SMART bus transit terminal. So working with both SMART and DDOT, the administration has identified seven areas to relocate and de-concentrate the bus terminal system. And both SMART and DDOT conducted a number of public hearings regarding the proposed bus pad locations. Again, those would be westbound Northland Drive, eastbound Northland Drive, northbound Rutland, southbound Rutland, Providence, and in front of Fox News, all for a total of expenditure of ninety, no more than $90,970.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to move the approval of consented item, item J.
Support.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Mandelbaum and supported by Mr. Brightwell that we approve Agenda Item J. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, for the reason I stated.
All right. Let's make the record show, we have one no vote. Thank you. All right, moving forward. We have two public hearings this evening. Item A is the confirmation, or to confirm the special assessment role for the City Center Advisory Board, the special assessment of operating purposes, and we'll turn that over to Mr. Crowe.
Thank you. As you stated, our public hearings to confirm the special assessment role for Special Assessment P-1174, fiscal year 2017 through fiscal year 2022. City Center Advisory Board Special Assessment for Operating Purposes and direct the city treasurer to levy the special assessment. And as you noted, the city assessor is here. The City Center Advisory Board has requested that the Special Assessment District established for the purpose of funding operations and maintenance and promotional development activities within the City Center District be continued. On April 17th, 2017, the city council approved standard special assessment resolutions number one and two for the SAD, P-1174, fiscal years 2017 through 2022, to establish such funds for a three-year period, oh, it's really a five-year period, there should be a correction in that, five-year period, and schedule a public hearing of necessity for May 15th, 2017. At that time, you approve the expanded district based on the future land use map that was approved last year. On May 15th, 2017, the city council approved standard special assessment resolutions number three and four for the special assessment declaring a public improvements on necessity and directing the preparation of the assessment role. The special assessment role has been prepared and has been provided for final confirmation in your packet. As you recall, I did do an extensive PowerPoint presentation last month showing all the benefits, the capital improvements, the special events, promotional events, such as the summer solstice that the city center has supported, the E to the B concerts, food truck rallies and so forth, and the capital improvements. With that, after the special, public hearing has been concluded, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crowe. All right, we'd like to open up the meeting for the public hearing. This is a public hearing, so any of those, anyone that's present that would like to speak to this particular matter, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, President Protem. Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 4037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I've got a question in reference to the boundary for this special assessment. It appears as if the businesses that are on Central Park Boulevard are just being almost overly assessed. So if you expand the area and maybe take it to 10 Mile or to 11 Mile, the service drive, I think that would alleviate some of the pressure on the businesses, but I'm concerned about this particular assessment because the Springwood Suites, which was an extended stay, now appears to be an apartment complex, and you have people living there beyond, well beyond the normal extended stay. It's purported that they filed a tax appeal with the city. So do you want to do another special assessment on a business entity on Central Park Boulevard that has already filed for a tax appeal? And if you could just comment on that, I'd appreciate it and yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone present that wishes to speak to the special assessment relating to the City Center Advisory Board Special Assessment, please give your name and address for the record.
Geraldina Amato. I wanted to talk about the procedure, if I, I may, just on this one. I can be contacted at 330-647-1937. I don't use the internet. The agenda doesn't come out until the Friday before this meeting. And it seems to me, in that, in that case, there at least should be available at the front desk a copy, or maybe that packet that you all get as council members, so that anyone interested in reviewing some of the details of these public hearing agenda items could get an opportunity to do so. The public would have to ferret out these things in order to even have too much to say about them because of the way the procedures are handled. And, and then also, for example, I didn't sign up for general public comment this time because of the restrictive policies. Even though you require people to sign up the Wednesday before the meeting, the agenda is not out until the Friday typically before the meeting, and not even in the morning, like in the afternoon sometime. So I'd appreciate if this council would consider some of these procedures. I know that the public hearings are more ritual than substance as far as the input of the general public. It's usually the special interests that are involved if they do come to speak. I think that's, that's what I wanted to kick in for my less, my two, my two cents.
All right, thank you very much. Again, the public hearing is still open. If there are any other residents that would like to speak to this particular item, agenda item, please come forward. Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed.
Through the chair?
Yes, Mr. Crowe.
I'll try to address the two issues that were raised for Ms. Amato and everyone. The Planning Department has had a policy that once a notice is put in the paper, residents can come into the Planning Department Building Department counter, and there is a draft available of whatever the public noticed, whether it's a rezoning, special land use. In this case, the special assessment has been available for three months on our counter for review. And as we update the information, we update the information on the counter. So those that don't have the internet can come in and physically review a hard copy. We also, on, through the city's website, post all of our site plan, rezoning and special land use on a map. It's very user-friendly. You can click on, and it shows illustrative versions of the perspectives and the site plan and the landscaping plan. So that information is available. With regards to the comment about tax appeal and the property on Central Park Boulevard, I've said this before, the Special Assessment District came out of the principal shopping district authorization by the state. Ours was established in 1992. All the properties on the Central Park Boulevard have been part of that assessment role since 1992. This is a self-assessment by the business community that is supporting a five-cent-per-square-foot assessment on themselves for non-residential properties for a five-year period. And we've had the support of the business community. They have raised the amount that they contribute because they see the value in it. So for the most part, we've had almost 100% support from the business community on this special assessment. This is not a tax.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, any comments? All right, good, Mr. Mayor, good. All right, do we need a motion then to-
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the assessment role for the Special Assessment P-1174 for the City Center Advisory Board Special Assessment as presented.
Support.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Mandelbaum and supported by Ms. Morris that we approve the assessment role for the Special Assessment P-1174. Is there any? Yes.
Just a friendly amendment, there is a recommended resolution. There was a typo that said three-year period. As I corrected, it's a five-year period. I just want to make sure that's on the record, that you're approving a five-year period for five cents.
Okay, thank you. With that amendment being made, we're good with it, the maker of the motion is good? Okay. So any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're all set. Thank you. And our next public hearing is PSLU 17-003, the zoning ordinance text amendment as it relates to the green infrastructure and the revision of landscaping and parking standards.
I'm just going to do a brief PowerPoint, if you give me a minute to get set up.
All righty.
Green infrastructure, low-impact development, LID for short, our activities, landscaping measures, and stormwater management, measures designed to mimic natural hydraulic conditions and to infiltrate, filter, store, evaporate, and detain stormwater runoff close to the source. I've stated in the past that the first one-inch rainfall contributes 90% of the pollutants to our stormwater system. It collects the oils, the gas, the grease, the dirt, the grime from the roads and hard surfaces and puts it directly into our stormwater system. Our goal is to reduce the amount of rainwater that goes into our storm system, use natural materials to absorb and clean and filter it before it goes into our rivers and streams. What are the benefits of green infrastructure? This comes directly out of our sustainable Southfield master plan. Green infrastructure provides social, environmental, and economic benefits. Water quality reduces the amount of polluted stormwater runoff. Flooding lessens flood risk. Water supply harvests rainwater, which is good for outdoor irrigation and some indoor uses. Quality of life provides aesthetic benefits. Recreation, it increases recreation and tourism opportunities. Economic, green infrastructure can increase residential property values located near trails, parks, and waterways. In addition, green infrastructure is one way to attract and retain the, the knowledge-based workforce in our region. It also reduces the hard infrastructure that is built under, underground. Traffic calming can slow, traffic can provide a buffer between the roadway. Evergreen Road is a perfect example. Habitat improvements and linkages can provide needed links to habitat corridors and strengthen and support rare important areas in the community. Helps with air quality and carbon sequestration by cleaning carbon dioxide out of the air. Health encourages outdoor physical activity as well as reduces chronic diseases and mental health. It can boost your mental health, memory. It can save money by reducing the community's infrastructure by using natural systems rather than the built system. And finally, on energy and climate, can reduce energy consumption and save money. Now, these are just some examples where we've updated the master plan to include, to include user-friendly images and illustrations and definitions of various types of low-impact development, green infrastructure that are optional for development. So bioretention is a stormwater management practice that utilizes landscaping and soils to treat stormwater runoff by collecting it in a shallow depression before filtering through an amended soil median. And we have several of these examples throughout the city. Detention basins are any constructed basin that temporarily stores water before discharging, discharging into an approved location. This was installed by a private development on Telegraph Road. Green roof is an engineered roofing system that includes vegetation planted in a growing medium above and underlying waterproof membrane material designed to reduce the volume of stormwater runoff from building roofs. This is an example from Lawrence Tech University. And the water that's not absorbed by this green roof is actually used in a gray water system that they use to flush toilets and to irrigate. So there's many different ways of capturing that water and reducing the amount that's going into our system. Cisterns are containers designed and installed to store qualities, quantities of stormwater above or below ground with a capacity greater than that of a rain barrel between 120 gallons and 6,500 gallons. Rain barrels are structures designed and installed to collect roof runoff in containers typically ranging from 50 to 100 gallons in size with subsequent release to landscape areas. You can, you can attach an old hose and water your plants using gravity-fed during drought seasons. We also have permeable surfacing of material materials and accompanying subsurface layers designed and installed specifically to allow stormwater to drain through the material. And the surfacing may include paver blocks, permeable concrete, and asphalt. We have examples throughout city, municipal campus at many of our parks, and Lawrence Tech has installed some of this permeable pavers as part of their new STEM facility. And there's also vegetated swale or rain garden, a stormwater conveyance system, naturally elongated depression, or constructed channel routing stormwater flows through vegetated areas. Now, the city engineer has the ability to credit up to 50% of the required stormwater on-site by using green materials. And this can be a long-term cost savings to developers. I use the example at our study session that for a hundred car, a typical hundred-car parking lot, by just reducing two feet of impervious service, surface area, there's an 8.8% reduction in stormwater mitigation, stormwater storage, and stormwater maintenance. So there's upfront savings for infrastructure and long-term savings for maintenance besides it being good for the environment. And then, as part of this, it was pointed out that our off-street parking provisions did not adequately provide a waiver, in a sense, for parking garages and structures. We, our goal is to reduce impervious surface, but a multi-story parking garage that's built, takes up the same floor plan and the same footprint as a, a surface parking lot, we don't want to penalize people from going up if ultimately we can reduce the stormwater runoff on the site. on the site, we do not want to penalize our twenty percent maximum over the required parking for parking structures. If they can afford to build it, we want to make sure we can accommodate. We also did a few cleaning up of some sections throughout the ordinance. One in particular was metric system was used throughout the ordinance. It was a throwback from the seventies. We're always having difficulty trying to calculate what the difference between metric and English measurements are. And in my entire thirty-year career, I've never had anybody submit anything specifically in metrics. So, I know there was a big movement in the seventies for that. So, we eliminated. And as I said, we cleaned up a few other sections throughout the ordinance. We provided detail of where all these changes are throughout the ordinance. We also included our landscape standards that by practice we've been referring people to, but that was more of a design manual. This now puts it into the ordinance and makes it much more transparent for developers upfront so they can see what the requirements of the city. And there's no guessing. It's very objective. But within those standards, they have the flexibility to use green infrastructure versus standard grass mounds, berms, and the kind of landscaping that not always is native, that requires much more irrigation, much more watering, and much more maintenance. Sometimes it requires amending the soils because of the acidity that's required for the plants. We are promoting and encouraging Nava plant materials that have deeper root system that can restrain, with, survive droughts, and without extensive irrigation and fertilization. So, with that, after the public hearing, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right, Mr. Crowe, thank you again. We discussed this just last week. I think we've pretty got a good feel for this piece already. But we do need to have the public hearing, so I'd like to open the public hearing right now to anyone present here that would like to speak to this item, the zoning, or the text amendment for the green infrastructure and landscaping, parking standards and such. Please give your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Once again, Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. I'm always impressed with these presentations that we do in the COW. I think that green infrastructure is a nice thing, but I just want to remind the council and the administration, as well as the city attorney, we had two Miosha complaints that talked about the city's infrastructure, the parking garages that are here, some asbestos that we had, and bedbugs. I just hope, within all of this, that you're putting in place that you have addressed all of those concerns in those two Miosha complaints. I hope that you are putting some infrastructure things in place to deal with the issues that we have. All of this is good, but just try not to put too many irons in the fire or be so spread it out. Deal with one particular thing before you move on to something else. I understand that everything green and dealing with the climate control and all of that is a popular fad right now, but you still have this building here, City Hall, you still have employees that work here, you still have residents that come here and that are in and out of City Hall, and this compound needs to be just as safe and as pretty as this green infrastructure that you're trying to put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak to this item, please come forward, give your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Geraldine Amato, three three oh six four seven nineteen thirty seven. I'd just like to call attention to the fact that since a municipal corporation is a subsidiary of the federal government, which is controlled by a Uniform Commercial Code, which is actually linked to an international code, nothing that's on this agenda is here without the permission of those above. It doesn't come from the hearts and minds of the locals. We are taught in our schools to keep on track with our thoughts according to the mastermind's plans, and we're taught to think in a certain track. If we are to redeem ourselves and our environment, such projects as these, which are token and only will be financed according to the master's will, those who control the purse strings. And I'm living in Southfield a short time, but I've noted there's quite a bit of corruption in many of the contracts that are obtained, that-
Mr. Amato, do you have anything specific to this particular issue?
Look, this is a three, you got a measly three minutes as a public comment.
You can stop the clock for a minute, that's fine. I just want to know, you need to be speaking to this particular-
And you're using my time up by interrupting me. No, I'll stop the time. No matter what I say here, I'm a member of the public, and I came to speak on a public hearing. Whatever I say, whether you agree with it or not, or think it's relevant, is beside the point. I think that everything on this agenda is irrelevant to reality, that we are facing a serious-
And if you should have signed up for the public comments, to have those comments.
Well, you don't allow me to sign up when I come here, so I'm trying to get in my two cents. I'm volunteering to come here, my own energy, my own resources to come here. I don't even feel like being here.
Unless you have something that's specific to this, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave the lecture.
The only timed event on this agenda is public comment. Doesn't that tell you something? How can you be so bold-faced and interrupting me when it's just a token opportunity to say something, and you wouldn't even let me have the token oppo-
Who's the one that's had the, had the switches turning up while you're another outrageous?
All right, if there's anyone else that is present that would wish to speak on this particular item, you may come forward.
Speaking my mind at a public hearing.
Mr. Amato, you're all, you're all set. All right.
And none of you can speak up in behalf of a member of a public hearing. You're gonna go along with Master Cruz.
All right, yes, please. Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this particular matter?
I, you didn't give me my time, and you used it up.
No, your time, your time is up, ma'am. Your time is up, Mr. Amato, please. Thank you.
No, a cop would not be in order from characters like you, who run the law of order. Law enforcement's not gonna take orders from-
Okay, listen, we need, we need to move forward with the meeting, Mr. Amato. If there's not anyone, if there's no one else left that would like to come to speak to this matter, I'd like to close the public hearing. Counsel, is there any comments on this matter, Mr. Mandelbaum?
I had a-
Mr. Chairman, I want to talk on this too.
Sure. I had a question on Section 5.8, subsection 6, where it talks about, I'm sorry, subsection 7. Where we're talking about parking spaces. You mentioned we're getting rid of the meter measurements, but it does have, it talks about parking spaces. It says minimum of nine feet with the meter measurement, as well as twenty feet again, meter measurement. We're just eliminating, we're not changing the size of the parking spaces, we're just removing the meters' measurement.
Through the chair. Couple of years ago, when we updated the parking ordinance, we did adjust the dimensional requirements. We created additional travel space, but reduced the parking, overall parking space, the depth. We do allow for two-foot overhang into landscape areas if it's not impeding on the landscape. Again, we had an overall reduction of two up to six feet of asphalt, depending on the layout. So, what, what this amendment is proposing is just to eliminate the metric measurement associated with the English measurements.
Okay. Yeah, the other thing is, I think this is a great addition to the ordinance. I was traveling over Memorial Weekend and looking at different parking lots through my travels because I was driving to the East Coast and different hotels and different structures. And I started noticing a lot more of these green space ideas and bioswales and everything else. And I thought, I think it's about time that we started having a lot more within Southfield. So, thank you very much for your efforts.
Yep, thank you. And again, this is an option, but we had barriers in our old ordinance requiring curbing and other hard surfaces that prohibited somebody from using green infrastructure. We certainly are gonna encourage it.
Thank you.
Mr. Brightwell? I was impressed with this last week when we, when we had it in the council study. And I'm still, still impressed from the standpoint that we're being proactive and we're forward-looking, and it's taking into consideration the environment. And I think the citizens of Southfield will be a hundred percent appreciative of this effort that we're doing and the forward-thinking that is being shown here by, by the planning department, and also by council, and also the administration. That is my comments, Mr. Chair. And I just want to indicate how, how happy I am to see this kind of forward-thinking. Thank you, Mr. Brightwell. Mr. Ficassi?
Yeah. Terry, I spoke to this last week when we had this presentation. I'm still very concerned that, that the amount of changes that are being made to the ordinance and trying to match it up with a outdated ordinance book is nearly impossible to, to, to see the difference of what is, is asked to, for a person to do as opposed to what may or may not be mandatory, right? When you say something shall be, shall means it will be. And so, you're using that terminology in the changes. And so, I'm sitting back and looking at, at the changes, and I see, you know, the city of Southfield has always been in the forefront of preserving our nature, our woodlands, our wetlands, our rouge. We bought entire rouge, I think, what, six hundred fifty acres of rouge, from twelve mile road all the way down to eight. We have a golf course that Michigan State came to see, our hydraulic system that we had on our golf course. So, we've been way ahead of the ballgame preserving our nature and, and worried about, you know, how the, the areas that we want to protect are protected. And, and I think when I look at, at this, I have to look back and say, but is it a vision, is it realistic, and, and, and an example of, of what is requested in, in this, in this era when we have competition between cities as to, to who's gonna develop and where? I used to say, you know, it's cheaper to go out in a cornfield than it is to, to come into an urban center to develop. And, and, and so, I, I hear that difference in what people will say. But now I look at it and say, well, we have so many regs on, on a developer, and not only just a developer, but a homeowner. If a homeowner wants to put a rain garden in front of their house, you know, first of all, they have to come up with three hundred fifty dollars for a permit. Then they have to come up with a landscape architect. And then they have to be told what kind of plants that are gonna be in the rain garden regardless of the price of the plant. You were even discussing, you know, certain, certain plants are in the rain garden because of the depth, the roots, and all those things. And I understand that. But I still don't see an example of, of a, you know, when I see the, the law that was just passed up in Lansing, helping Detroit come up with state dollars to redo buildings to make them compete to some of us in the suburbs, you know, I, my ears perk up and say, hey, how am I gonna compete in this world? You know, I see LaShia Road, one mile, with six and a half million dollars, right? I look at, at Evergreen Road, it's beautiful. I'm not arguing the thing, and I'm not saying we spent too much money. That was twelve million, okay? Yes, it's got, it's got the Ficassi swamp, and it's got this, and it's got that. But, but, you know, when you ask somebody who has to go to the bank or get a mortgage on a building, and he comes in and tries to come in with a site plan, then he's told, you know, this is what you're gonna have to do, this you shall do, and then you give options. And, and by the time you get through, just forgetting about all the permits to get to the first station, now you're gonna have to deal with a landscape architect to come up with, with a water treatment center, really, it's what it is, so that the water that goes out is clean. And so, I, I, I sit back and I said, there's nothing wrong with this, and I, and I believe in preserving the environment. I really do. Being a farm boy and, and a hunter and all these things, I understand what you're talking about. But, but in this competition that we're finally in, you know, and it's getting worse, the competition, I'd like to know how much more is it gonna cost? You can come up and say, well, the first floor of a, of a parking lot, you know, if it has this kind of a floor, over the years, it's gonna get so much percentage off, and it'll gain during the time. The bank doesn't want to hear that. You know, it, it, that's why they come and ask for tax abatement, is because they need assistance to get these buildings off the ground. And so, I, I look at that and I say, well, you know, if a guy builds just a three-story parking deck today, five hundred sixty cars is, is almost, you know, twenty thousand dollars a car. And so, you're starting at that point. And, and so, you know, it's nice to tell the guy, well, it'd be nice to put, you know, flowers on the roof, you know, and grass on the roof, and it's nice. How much additional is it gonna be to build that on top of everything else? And yeah, you can maybe, you know, save some of the water, clean the water, whatever it is. But the point I'm really getting at is I still would like to be competitive and yet, you know, save what our woods and our waters and everything else. There's gotta be a happy medium. But when you come in and, and say, we're gonna expedite these projects so that we can get the, you know, the taxes for these properties, you know, it, it gets delayed, 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 and, and sometimes it's a year, year and a half before they can get through the process. All depends on, you know, how much money you have. While the process goes on, they're paying a mortgage fee. They're paying every month, you know, out. And, and I just want to be realistic of what it's gonna cost of that. We've got a lot of land to do across the street, you know. And, and you know the one person that, that wanted to build a flat parking lot across the street on Central Park Boulevard, not Central Park, Civic Center Drive, extend it in front of the engineering building? And I said, no, tell him he's gotta build a parking deck. Well, see, that's the economics of it. He fought like crazy. Matter of fact, he wouldn't talk to me anymore, and he'd end up having a, a parking lot, right? He may, in the winter time, have to walk, walk a quarter mile to the office building, but he just enlarged the parking lot instead of building a parking deck. And that's what, that's real, that's real. And that's what's out there. And, and that's what my concern is. And I have those examples that I'm looking at and saying, you know, if you're a city and you get grant money for this to help you do it, that's fine, like you did Evergreen Road. Or if you do this, you get a little money. You know, this roundabout, you get a little money. But that's like the carrot, you know? But the average developer can't get that. And, and, you know, and I'm not speaking for developer because a, a resident would have the same problem. And I don't know, what the average landscape architect charges today, I don't know how much an hour, you know? And, and if you can get one. And, and so, I just was expecting maybe some examples of, of, you know, two guys building a two-story building and, and following, and following the ordinance, which is the law, following the ordinance to, to, to do it, you know, what's the difference? What's the, they maybe, maybe there's a compromise in the middle. But, but everything that's in here, and council better know it, that's law. The ordinance, when you say pass ordinance 176, 127, that becomes law. And, and I'm just throwing that out, and I'm very concerned about it, just like I am about getting buses out to the suburbs, which I call north of Nine Mile Road.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions from counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to move approval of PSLU 17-0003.
Support. Been properly moved and by Mr. Mandelbaum and seconded by Mr. Brightwell that we approve PSLU 17-003, the zoning ordinance text amendment for the green infrastructure and landscaping parking standards. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
I'd like to make a statement on that, if I could.
Sure.
Number one, I would like to have the latest zoning book that we have, Adam Clerk, if we have one. You know, I told you the other day, the last one I have is, is the one from way back.
Through the chair, the, the latest version is online, that gets updated as these are amended.
I understand when you say online, you know, I'm going to go home and I'm going to print out the ordinance book, huh? Why don't you print it out and give it to me if you have one, okay?
There's a cost, there's a cost to that.
Well, I know there's a cost to it.
And that's what we're trying to do, is eliminate the cost of printing out things, and it changes. So, you have an older ordinance, with all due respect, that's outdated.
Yeah, I know it.
And you're referring to something that's outdated. If we had to print copies up all the time, every time there's an amendment, that's where that waste in the cost of, it is, so.
Terry, I get into, I get into, if I, if I can get into it, because I'm trying to get into it, some help from getting some in, into, through my computer, but what you have here is, is you have like, you have no, no page even number in it, right? Have no page number. So, I'm going through, I'm going through the ordinance book online, I've got to look through that, and then I got to try to follow, get the title of, of this ordinance, and, and then I have to, if I want to turn to page five, which may be a certain thing, I don't even have a page number, okay?
I understand that.
So, so, I mean, so what do you, I mean, sit there for twenty-four hours around the clock to, to read an ordinance?
Again, as, as I stated, we tried, we developed.
I'm sorry, but my time is worth more than that.
I understand, but we, for the purposes of reducing paper.
I understand that.
Okay, that's all.
But you've still got to have, be able to read the law, all right? I mean, thank God that all the computers work. And I'm just saying is that that's, I'm telling you why I oppose it. And I do my homework, and it's really darn difficult to go through this thing, even online, even online, all right? And somebody out there can try it and see what it takes to go and find out what page and what number and what, what, what the zoning is on, on a multiple or with a house or anything.
We, we will print you a copy, but it's only as good as until this amendment is made.
Yeah, I know.
That's, that's my only point. I'm not trying to be argumentative with you.
No, I don't want to satisfy them, I just want you to know the facts of what, what, what it takes to be up here and do your homework. It's difficult if you don't have the tools, okay?
All right, thank you.
I mean, you fudge your way through it, but I don't do that.
All right.
Could I, could I make a final comment?
Yeah.
I, I was proud to wear my College of Environmental Science and Forestry tie tonight because this is a proud moment for Southfield and, and my team. That's all I wanted to say.
All right, very good, thanks, Terry.
Why, you're saying that I'm not an environmentalist?
No, I'm saying I'm proud.
Show me your tie.
I'm saying I'm proud to wear my, my college alumni tie.
My tie's made out of paper, okay?
Yeah, we need to introduce the ordinance number.
Okay.
Sixteen seventy-eight.
All right.
I'd like to move the introduction of ordinance number sixteen seventy-eight.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum and supported by Ms. Morris that we introduce ordinance number sixteen seventy-eight. Is that correct? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Moving on to communications, first request for recognition is Mr. Gerard Mullin. Please come forward, give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Mr. Chairman, I was on vacation this past May, so I missed all of May's council meetings. Sad to say, I learned from the May twenty-fifth issue of the Southfield Sun that this spin riff council has been living up to its name during my absence. The page one headline in the Sun stated, and I quote, "Council approves purchase of tablets for city officials," unquote. Unfortunately, the headline left out the word "personal," as in personal tablet. These personal tablets cost the Southfield taxpayers seventeen hundred dollars each, times thirteen, for a grand total of over twenty-three thousand dollars plus an additional forty-five dollar per month fee for each tablet, or over seven thousand dollars annually for unlimited data through a built-in internet card. The story being told by this council is that this city is being more eco-friendly while saving money. This is not really true. This city will be spending more money by buying these needless and additional computers and computer services for this council and six staff members. This so-called new initiative, that is, that this council is replacing council's paper agenda via a computer download, is not new at all. The real story here is that since two thousand and seven, council's agenda packet has been online for a paperless download. That was a decade ago, not a month ago. I've been using a five-year-old laptop computer that cost me five hundred dollars, not seventeen hundred dollars, to download council's packet. Plus, I have free access to the internet with unlimited data via my cellphone through a technique called tethering. Why are you folks paying over seven thousand dollars per year in place of a free service that you could get through your free city cellphone? And finally, why can't you folks use your own personal computers to download the agenda? This is just another sorry example of a spin riff council. Thank you.
Next person asks for recognition is Ms. Pamela Gerald. Please come forward, you have three minutes. We start the clock over, please?
Thank you down there. I just want to get right to my speech and start by thanking this administration for addressing my concerns so expeditiously. Last week, I expressed my issue regarding a flyer promoting an upcoming event. One would assume that the flyer on the counter in the lobby has been approved. We now know that that's not necessarily the case. On Thursday this week, June the fifteenth, from six PM to eight PM at the Southfield Public Library, the city of Southfield will be hosting a town hall meeting for the purpose of discussing the roads. Now, what's wrong with this flyer? Let me tell you. It looks cheap, very generic, it does not have the official Southfield logo, it has Tanya Morris's picture on it as the event host. First of all, the city's website stated that Councilwoman Tanya Morris was the sponsor of this event. As a person who has planned large events for crowds up to twelve hundred people, a sponsor means that you pay for expenditures, like the venue, the flyers, the staff, and all the people associated with putting on the event. So, I'd like to ask you, Councilwoman Tanya Morris, other than these flyers that you purchased, have you incurred any other expenses? And my answer to that would be no. This administration should not allow flyers to be put on the counters that have not been approved. This flyer has not met the threshold because it didn't have the city's logo on it. You went as far as putting the same flyer on your Facebook with an official Southfield logo, and I think that that doesn't make sense. No way in the world should this city ever allow an elected official to put out a flyer that does not meet the city's approval. We don't really need anything with your pictures on it because you're out there in the lobby, you are in the calendar, and if you come to the meetings, people see you via cable. So, pictures on literature is not necessary. But I would like to thank the administration for coming up with the flyer that I think is very appropriate, and it gets right down to the heart of the matter. Town hall on roads, the cute little cones, the date and all the pertinent information, and it tells you to contact the city's engineering department. This is who is actually sponsoring the event, the city of Southfield, the engineering department, and it has several city employees that will be speaking as participants. Remember that the citizens are at the top of the organizational chart. All of you up there work for us, and don't forget that. You got an ethics policy? Learn the policy. It says, whatever you do, you should maintain the confidence of the public. Doing something like this is not the confidence of the public. Thank you. And this is Sylvia Jordan crap, remember? The justice form?
All right. Moving on to our next portion of the meeting, for council, we have three travel expense reports to approve.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve the travel expense for Dan Brightwell for the Government Finance Officers Association on May twenty-first through twenty-fourth, the travel expense for Don Ficassi for the Eight Mile Boulevard Leadership Luncheon on May twelfth, and the travel expense for Councilman Ficassi for the Oakland Village Association Dinner on May eighteenth.
They get a support? I'll support it. I support it. Yes, it's for party, it's for Tanya.
Support.
Thank you. All right. So, we have a motion by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the travel expense reports for Councilman Brightwell and Councilman Ficassi, items A, B, C. Any other discussion on those? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right. We have one extension on items B and C for Mr. Ficassi.
I abstain from mine.
And Mr. Brightwell abstaining from item A. All right, council, do you have any other comments for the evening before we move to the close of the meeting?
No, I'd just like to remind everyone about the town hall on the roads this Thursday. We've been working really hard, we have a very good presentation. We hope that you join us this Thursday at the Southfield Public Library at six o'clock PM.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Mandelbaum?
I know we had the presentation earlier about the summer solstice run and parade, but also earlier in the day, this Saturday, the Southfield's pool is opening, and they're having free swimming lessons from twelve to six thirty. If it's hot like it was yesterday, please remember to wear sunscreen. Unfortunately, I got a little burnt. Also, next week, our Parks and Rec Department on the first day of summer is having a come-out and play. They're going to have water inflatables, games, bounce houses, and you can even cruise across the front lawn on a zip line, which I, I hope to do. Also, as a public service announcement, Ten Mile Road, as we continue our road infrastructure projects, Ten Mile Road will be closed between Greenfield and Southfield Road at the halfway point on Pierce Road. All businesses will be accessible, as well as all entrances to the neighborhoods except on Pierce Road. So, if you are traveling down Ten Mile on your daily commute, Mount Vernon is the new appropriate detour that will start this Friday, the sixteenth, and continue through the end of August. So, please plan appropriately. Last week, we had our kickoff for the summer with the Eat to the Beat Concert, as well as the first kickoff of the Southfield Community Cup, which is a friendly corporate challenge with sixteen corporations, including the city of Southfield. It was very well attended, it was nice seeing a lot of the friendly corporate competition. There's a, every week is a different competition, you earn points, and the finale is a, as part of the competition, there's a charity component with Gleaners Food Bank. You can go to the city's website, you can contribute monetarily to Gleaners to help the city of Southfield earn more points that way. But the final competition is a construction. They're going, going to be taking all sixteen teams here in the pavilion, I believe, will be taking all of the donated food throughout the competition, which is mostly through June and, I think, the first week of, of July or so, and will be making towers and different things with the different construction. So, if you want to get involved with possibly helping, I think the city planner may be looking for some architects and some engineers, at least for the Southfield team, but you're, everyone is more than welcome to, to donate monetarily to help the city of Southfield as well.
I just wanted to add that we're actually seeking donations of canned goods, and there's some gleaner boxes set up throughout the city. We're going to use those donations to build these towers.
Absolutely. If, if there's donation boxes at Parks and Rec, in the lobby, I think also in, at Beachwoods, each week, if you go to the city's website and search under Southfield Community Cup, there's a different food item that's being asked for each week, that Gleaners specifically has said these are what are requested the most. So, if you can't donate monetarily, you can donate with a food item, and we will build a very nice construction project with that. Also, the golf courses are, through Parks and Rec, is offering different Friday freebies at the different golf courses, different things. If you contact either the Parks and Recs Department or the specific golf courses, they do, they're trying to get some additional people out on the golf courses. I think it would be very nice if you enjoy golf, as at least Councilman Cruz does, you can have some friendly competition and, and some things like that. My last question is really for the city attorney. However, I noticed in the Southfield Sun, in one of the back pages in the advertisements, there was a public notice where AT&amp;T Mobility is looking to put a cellphone tower or some type of tower on Northwestern Highway next, in one of the buildings next to Dur Corporation, and they're asking for public comment. And I was wondering if that's something that will eventually make its way to the city council or to the planning department. Looks like they want to add an additional tower. It was odd seeing it in a little small box in the back of the Southfield Sun, and I didn't know what the proper protocol was.
Yeah, I mean, depending on the size and so forth, but I, I am not aware, so that's Mobility wants to put up?
AT&amp;T Mobility is proposing additional antenna on a hundred and third, a hundred and three-foot building at two six seven one one Northwestern Highway.
Through the chair. As you may recall, we tried to do administrative review when they were adding on, but the state licensing exempted local communities from weighing in on that. Only if there's a new tower.
Well, so this is on an existing tower?
This is an existing tower or structure?
I don't know if any.
On an existing structure.
Oh, it's on a building?
Yeah.
On a building, but they want to add a second antenna.
Okay, that's probably why.
So, that excludes our local input on that.
We've had discussions with Mobility about doing some work in the rights of way, the city rights of way, not on a private building, but in the city rights of way, and potentially putting antennas, smaller type antennas on existing DTE poles. So, I don't know whether that is in conjunction with that proposal, and it may be that it's a, a system-wide bill that they're, that they're doing. And as we get farther along in terms of the discussion through the rights of way, we will be back to council because there ha, there will have to be some discussion of councils approving them to be in the rights of way. It's not under the Metro Act, it, it's a distinct communication that they want to install, so.
So, it's, it's exempt from coming to us since it's not in the right of way?
This one.
It sounds like it's an addition, it's an additional that's exempt from local review.
Because it'll be, they're negotiating with a building owner to put it up, and since it's not a new tower, that's where we're impacted. But in terms of coming into the rights of way, if that's, if that proceeds further, then that will come to the council.
I think, let me, in my audit days, historically, I did audits of right-of-way for AT&amp;T years ago. ago, and if there, if it was a private ownership, the owner, he grants the right-of-way, and AT&amp;T paid them. So that, I'm sure that if it's public, we, they would have to go through the city of Southfield and/or that particular governing authority, but if it's private, it would, could just be a private entities, you know, a business arrangement with their private entities.
So then I would question, if it's a private entity, why are they seeking public comment?
Well, they may be going through the regulations under the state law, and they need to put that notice out there, so that if anybody wants to object, it's certainly not going through the planning department, so.
Okay. Thank you. Other than that, again, I'd just remind everyone to wear sunscreen when it gets hot outside, so you don't burn, and stay safe. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from council? All right, Mr. Mayor?
Wanted to first comment that on Saturday, Clerk Banks, Councilman Fercassi, and I, and our Parks and Rec Director, Fields, were out through the dedication of the new concession stand and lavatory, handicapped, accessible lavatories for the Miracle Field. We've had this facility for fifteen years. This is the latest addition to it. The concession stand and the lavatories obviously can be used by all patrons who come to the Civic Center complex, but this was built through the Miracle Field, Easter Seals, Walmart, and a number of other, other donors. So we've, we've gained a facility on our complex. I'd also mention that coming up is our Garden Walk, our eleventh annual Garden Walk. The neighborhood this year is San Marino, in the northwest corner of the city, Inkster and Twelve Mile Road. The Garden Walk will be held on June twenty-fifth, that's a Sunday afternoon, from two to five PM, and there are fifteen gardens on display. The tour actually starts at the Fountain Park Office Plaza. You enter on Inkster Road, and a shuttle bus will take you through the neighborhood, a continuous shuttle bus. You get to see fifteen yards, plus the shuttle bus and refreshment, all for the mere price of ten dollars per ticket. This is the Southfield Parks and Garden Club's fundraiser, and that money is used to beautify the lawns of chore recipients. So again, tickets are ten dollars. They'll be available at the, in the lobby here, and this is one of our beautification efforts. So we encourage people to, to come out. And finally, I'd like to mention that the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative, the NRI program, in partnership with the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Board, Habitat for Humanity Oakland County, and the city of Southfield, will be hosting a free workshop on June twenty-fourth from nine AM to two PM. It's entitled, "Rebuilding, Renewing, Revitalizing: Preserving Our Community Through Home Ownership." This free workshop will give participants a, cover a variety of topics, in, including how to improve your credit score, preparing a budget, a household budget, understanding different mortgage options, and home buying, the home buying process. Also, there'll be tours of some of the homes that will currently be available under the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. This, anyone may attend, but this workshop is particularly geared to prospective home buyers or, and/or realtors. And again, that's Saturday, the twenty-fourth, in Parks and Rec, from nine AM to two PM. Free workshop. Again, rebuilding, renewing, revitalizing, preserving our community through home ownership. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have anything from the administration?
Yes, I'd like to just comment regarding the MiOSHA complaints. All of those complaints have been addressed with the state, after substantial time and effort, money, but all of them have been addressed, and we continue to work improvements. Council's aware of the actions you took in January to make some of the improvements, and, for example, flatwork around the campus, and we'll continue to make those improvements. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Attorney?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
This evening, clerk's office?
Yes, I'd like to say something. Please. To the public, after forty-three years of service in the city clerk's office, eighteen of those years as your city clerk, I have decided not to seek reelection and to retire at the end of my term in November. The decision to retire was not made lightly. I have considered all my options, and right now, this is what is best for myself and my family. I have served the city of Southfield faithfully, and I'm extremely proud of my forty-three years of service to our wonderful city. It has been a privilege to work with so many talented, hard-working, and dedicated individuals. I will forever be grateful for the many lessons learned and the wonderful leadership, the wonderful friendships that I have made during my time with the city. I strongly believe that there is a season of life for everything that we do. My season has been very enriching, gratifying, and now it is time to start the next chapter of my life. My twenty-fifth is a filing deadline for those running for office. If anyone is interested in running for the position of city clerk, I strongly urge you to contact me and get petitions. I promise everyone that I will be studying all the candidates running for the position of city clerk very carefully, and I will publicly support the candidate that I feel will best represent all the wonderful people in our city, in addition to the candidate that I feel will move this city and the people in our city forward. While I will miss everyone dearly, this is not goodbye. I am just taking a break at this time. I promise you will see my face again. Southfield has been my whole life, and that will not change. I want to thank everyone for your support over the years. I will continue to be a part of this very special community for many years to come, and I want to thank everyone. Thank you.
And thank you. And I think I speak for all of us in saying that it would be a huge loss to see you go. I think we've all enjoyed our time working with you, your level of professionalism in our, in our office, and your institutional knowledge and history of this city, especially for me. I can definitely speak for me, but I think for all of us, it's just been invaluable. So I know you're not saying goodbye, just taking a little break here, so, and that's the more exciting part. So kudos to you to, to start a new pathway, and, you know, we look forward to seeing what that brings for you.
Thank you.
Let's see, nothing else to do with the schedule, so we just have two ordinances that we need to enact, council?
Mister Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number sixteen seventy-six.
Sixteen seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Support.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Morris, that we enact ordinance number sixteen seven six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number sixteen seventy-seven.
Support.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Morris, that we enact ordinance number sixteen seventy-seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there any other matter that anyone wishes to bring up for the good of the order? If not, this meeting is adjourned.